Rodriguez, you're on the wrong side of the bill.
Hereby call this special meeting of the City Council to order. Will you please stand and join me in saluting the flag?
Fledgely
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilors. Mr. Clerk, item number one.
Item number one, call of the meeting.
Accepted and placed on file.
Item two, officer's return of notice.
Accepted and placed on file.
Matters to be acted upon this evening under the special meeting agenda are the City Council approval and adoption of the fiscal year 2023 budget order. For appropriations as presented or amended.
Councilors, if anyone has any amendments, please stand and I will call on you. Counselor Farwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I offer a few cuts, very quickly, I have great respect for the integrity and the competence of all of our department heads. I think it was a lack of attention to detail this year because there were some department heads that came in and said, "Well, I'm not really sure about that. Well, I can't really explain that." The other thing that really bothered me is when we get this book, which is a lot of reading, and by the way, I mentioned this to Mr. Clarkson before the meeting, it is my belief and it is my hope that this is a genuine, accurate presentation of where we think money needs to be allocated for each department and for specific purposes. And I was really concerned when we had one or more people say, "Well, we don't really use it for that, we use it for this." A budget is not, if you'll excuse the expression, a slush fund. It is a blueprint for where we want to go in the next fiscal year. And I am not happy with some of the components of this blueprint. And I did mention to Mr. Clarkson again that he and his staff are extraordinary, but Brockton needs to improve the process in a lot of different areas. And I think that is our challenge as we go forward after July 1st. This budget process, how department heads prepare, how well-prepared they are, has got to change because I don't want to go through this again when someone says, "Well, no, we don't use it for that, we use it for this." So having said all that, I'm going to start off by proposing, and Counselor Tavares and I are co-sponsoring this one, page 234, DPW Water. Give you time to go to that page. On page 234, under DPW Water, which is the enterprise account, you will see property-related services, 123039. You will see contractor emergency repairs, $93,350, same as last year, and you will see consultants, $293,866. And I am proposing that all three of those be cut for a total of $510,255. And let me add to my colleagues, I have no problem if someone comes back to us with details on where additional funds are needed, if this has cut out something that is legitimately needed, documented, and a presentation is made to us. But I do not feel I can in good conscience leave that amount of money. $510,255 in the DPW Water Enterprise account, where I'm just not sure and I can't defend that expenditure. So I'd like to present this to the clerk.
Is there a second?
There's a second?
Second. Second.
Hold on, we can, hold on a little.
One second, councilors. Counselor Thompson, on the motion?
Yes, on the motion. I'm just, I just want to, oh, sorry. I just want a clarification. You named three different line items and one number. Can we just clarify exactly how much, what are the three specific line items again? How much from each line item?
Certainly, Counselor, thank you. Two-thirds or three-quarters of the way down the page, property-related services, whatever that is, 123039.
I see that, okay.
Second one is contractor.
So what's the specific cut from that one? Is that?
The entire amount, 123039.
Oh, the entire amount, okay.
The next one is contractor emergency repairs, which is $93,350. It's the same amount as last year. And I, again, not to belabor the point, they can come back and ask for that if it's important. And the next one is consultants, $293,866.
So the full amount of all three line items?
Yes, the full amount of all three line items.
Just on
On the motion, Counselor?
No.
No wonder, no wonder we didn't speak all night long. But the, as far as I understand, we're not cutting, we can't cut individual line items.
Correct.
We can cut from the main, the main or the title. But your wish is that at least it's put out here for people to know where that came from, right?
Yes, through the chair, back to you, that is correct. We do not have the power to eliminate a particular line item, but the net effect of this will be, if this stands, we have saved that much money to the taxpayers in that amount, with the caveat, they can come back, they being DPW can come back if money is needed.
But Counselor, you are correct. The cut is from the purchase of services and that it's not those three specific lines. The cut equals those three specific lines, but the cut is from purchase of services, the entire block.
All right, councilors, we're all set? Okay. All in, Shannon, are you good or?
Yeah.
Okay. So all in favor of the proposed cut? One, two, three, four. All right. All opposed? The cut is passed. Counselor Farwell?
Mr. President, I have another one from public property. That is on page 347. Hold for a minute while we go to 347. I am not going to spend a lot of time in this. I think enough was said the other night about the Rock Stadium, about the amount of revenue coming back, but I am proposing, and it's found under stadium purchase of services, even though the amount would come from the broad general category, purchase of services, $200,000. That would leave, if I'm reading this right, $53,100 from that particular line item. The actual total would change, but that is the genesis of what I'm trying to do and that is the amount. Though again, it's not, we don't have the authority to change that line item, but we do have the authority to remove the money and stop the bleeding of money into that stadium.
Second.
Motion has been properly made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed, the motion passes. Counselor Tavares?
Hello, actually, I am gonna do some cut on page 224 on wastewater filtration surcharge. Basically, the reason I'm doing so was not well-applied and not, I was confused and I really understand it, and the question was not clear when they answered. And I just want to cut all thing, all the number.
224?
Wastewater filtration here, but yes, page 224. For 65.802.
So again, councilors, just so you know, that's from purchase of services is the overall. The cut is from purchase of services.
Purchase of service, actually, sorry.
Was there a second?
Was there a second? Motion properly made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Tavares, you have another one?
Yes, I have another one. Sorry, just give me a second, I'll go back a second one. Just give me a second. What do you mean? All right, on the page 296. I want to do some, some cut, $10,000, goods and, actually, goods and supplies. Just want to do, make some cut, like $10,000.
296?
Yes, 296. Goods and supplies. Second.
Sorry, what, from what line? I mean, from what category?
Mayor's office, goods and supplies, $10,000.
296.
Page 296.
Goods and supplies, actually, yeah.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded.
On the motion.
On the motion, Counselor D'Agostino.
Through the chair, Counselor Tavares.
Counselor.
Mark, stand up. Sorry, I just, maybe I didn't hear you. Are you trying to, you're cutting $10,000 from this item?
Yes, at like 632, 63824. I just want to cut like $10,000. Basically, it's going to be like, you know, 5380.
Which of the sub-items is it that you're, I know that's not how we cut it, but what is the goal, what you're?
I just like, you know, want to make you, I think like it really kind of, again, is very like, you know, understand it, and I think like the number's kind of a little high. Again, if they do need it, they can come back again and ask, just.
Is there not a particular sub-item that you were, okay, all right, just the overall?
Because the number 63, like I said, I was confused and I will.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
That's it.
All right, councilors, the motion's been properly made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Councilors, Counselor Farwell?
Someone may have something else, but under DPW Water, page 234, I have one last one, which Counselor Tavares and I are co-sponsoring. Let me go to 234 here. Councilors, you'll notice on that page, under personal services, other than overtime or non-OT, you will notice a line item separation costs. Last year, or I should say this year, it was $76,800. Miraculously, next year is projected to be $176,000.
Through the chair, what page are we on?
I'm sorry?
234. 234, thank you.
234.
Thank you.
Obviously, we owe people separation costs under collective bargaining agreements. Show me a list. Show me where the money's going. Show me for what purpose. I have no problem if the mayor submits a supplemental appropriation to this account for separation costs, but absent that information, who's retiring, when they're retiring, how much we owe, and unused vacation, sick time, I'm not willing to throw that money in there because if it's not used, it can be used anywhere else under personal services, non-OT. And I'm just looking for a level of detail. Tonight, that's my main objective, is give me a level of detail, send a message, that's what we want as a council. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
What was the dollar mark?
Even $100,000.
Second.
It's coming out of, I'm sorry, it's coming out of
Personal services?
Mr. Clerk, personal services, other than overtime.
Non-OT. Is there a, is properly made and seconded. Counselor Rodriguez on the motion?
No, 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 I thought we were done with that one.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Counselor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. In line with what Counsel Farwell just said in terms of clarity and the level of detail, I want to voice my thoughts and ideas as well with these cuts that we're making. Again, it's not supposed to be designed to punish any of the departments, but to basically bring some clarity and understanding to the folks that are, that watch us on a regular basis, to know that everything that we do in this city is on the table and for their ratification in the sense. So keeping that in mind, I too would like to offer a cut, and this is to the Department of Planning and Economic Development. Again, not to be a punishing of anything, but I want to be able to take $25,000 from their consulting budget and $150,000 from the downtown diff, because with all due respect to all the folks that work in this building, there's some of us that feel that there's not a great deal of at least clarity when it comes to dealing with a lot of these funds that are dished out from this building. Again, not against, not against anything that's being done, but at the same time, just so that we can be clear about this, therefore, I'm submitting for us to take, out of the planning and economic development, an amount of $175,000 from the purchase and purchase of services, reducing that budget line item from $389,000 to $89,800 to $214,800, again, deducting $175,000 from that item.
Second. Motion's been properly made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Counselor D'Agostino?
Again, keeping with the theme of greater clarity, in the Board of Health, page 158, I am proposing a cut to personal services, non-overtime, of $143,692. The current budget request for that item is 1,231,480. This would leave 1,87688, I mean, 788, I'm sorry, in that item. My reasoning, they're looking for us to fund a chief health officer. You were all here, I asked for details on that position, none were available. I understand that we're trying to modernize our Board of Health to a Department of Health and Human Services, and I do support doing that. What I would like to see, just like a lot of these other cuts proposed, is details. What is the overall plan? What is this new position going to do? What is this new structure going to look like? And we didn't get that. And so I'm not comfortable, and I hope that you all will agree, I'm not comfortable funding a brand-new position of almost $144,000 of taxpayer money to a department that also, all of their inspectors are about to be shipped off to the building department, too. So we're restructuring this department, and I'm going to support that when the time comes, but I want to see details, I want to see a plan. I want to have an understanding of what we're asking the taxpayers to pay for and fund, and that is the spirit in which I am proposing this cut.
All right. Motion's been properly made and seconded. All those, I'll let you get back to your desk. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion passes. Counselor Mendez?
Yes, so it's on page 278. And it's the Law Department under purchase of services. I'm proposing a cut of $100,000, and that is after conversations with our city solicitor, the fact that we hired more attorneys, we gave them a raise, they're doing a lot more work in-house, so that could go to cut back on the consultants and the legal, outside legal. So instead of the $446,000 in 895, I'm cutting back $100,000 from the purchase of service.
Thank you, Counselor. There's a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Any other councilors? Councilors, we're going to take a brief recess to total this up. Oh, we have one more? Counselor Texera?
Thank you, President. My cut will be on the mayor's budget, page 296, on purchase and service. It's 599,795 dollars, so I'm going to do an $80,000 cut from purchase and service.
Second.
Motion has been properly made and seconded. I'm sorry, what was the?
Yeah, hold on.
The department and the page number, Counselor, sorry?
296.
296.
196?
296.
Mayor's office.
How much?
$80,000.
From purchase of service?
Purchase and service.
Purchase of service.
Okay.
Goods and supplies.
Counselor Farwell?
Just through you, yes, on the motion, through you, Mr. President, to my colleague, did you have a particular subcategory under personal services that you were focusing on? Or I guess a better way to ask this is, will we still be able to pay the people who work in the mayor's office if this goes through? And that might be a Mr. Clarkson question, I don't know.
But it's not staff.
Purchase of services?
I'm sorry, purchase of, I thought it was, I thought it was personal services. My apologies, it's late.
It's 10 o'clock, you know.
My hearing is going at this hour.
Everything is going at this hour.
The line item that you have in mind may not be where the department head makes their cut, just so you understand that.
Counselor Texera, would you like to expound on your, on your proposed cut?
Yes, it's on the purchase of service and consultant.
Okay.
On the motion?
Thompson?
What was the amount?
Eighty thousand.
Eight thousand.
Thank you.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Anyone else? All right, councilors, now we are going to take a brief recess for the clerk and our legal counsel to tally this up.
Are we talking to cables to make sure that they're not hitting the button?
DPW Sewer Department account by $550,000, and I'm taking that from purchase of service.
Second.
How much again, Counselor?
$550,000.
$550,000. Through the chair, what page?
On the motion?
On the motion, Counselor Rodriguez?
Can you tell us what line item at least that is coming from?
I'm just reducing the overall total by $550,000.
Counselor Mendez?
Counselor, that's all you're doing with any of these votes?
What page are you on?
I understand that, Mr. Clerk, but at least to give us a sense that we're not
Page 224 and 225.
I think the will of the council needs to be kind of expressed as we did, knowing that it's coming out of a particular category, but at least a will so that you know what it's coming, what your intentions are. Because it shouldn't be the very bottom of
Okay.
Motive, Counselor?
I'm focused on property-related services and other contract services. Okay. Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Councilors, speak now or forever hold your peace. Any more cuts?
You sign it?
All right, we're going to take a real recess this time. We are back. Councilors?
Councilors, questions on adoption of adopting the order, which was originally $515,797, $797,041, reduced by $2,334,749 to a new amount of $513,462,292.
Councilors, the question is on adoption by a roll-call vote. Madam Clerk, we
Mr. President?
Counselor Azak?
I'd like to request a reverse roll call.
Oh, stop, you know what's
There is a second?
Second.
Second.
Doesn't require a vote.
It doesn't require a vote, so we're in.
I'll vote first.
Be reversed.
Yeah.
Be reversed.
If we reverse the council, it's over. Reverse roll-call vote, Madam Clerk.
Thompson?
Yes.
Texera?
Yes.
Tavares?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Minicello?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yeah.
D'Agostino?
Yes.
Azak?
And yes.
That's 11 in the affirmative.
Mr. President, I move reconsideration in the hope it does not prevail.
Second.
Motion for reconsideration has been properly made and seconded. All in favor of reconsideration? All opposed? Reconsideration fails, the budget is adopted. Thank you, councilors.
Item, item number four, ordered that the city of Brockton appropriates the amount of $16 million to pay costs of designing, reconstructing, and rehabilitating the city's sewer system, including but not limited to cleaning, cleaning, inspecting, and relining sewer lines and mains, manhole rehabilitation, bypass pumping, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the city treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow set amount under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 8-4, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. Further ordered that the city treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44A, any and all bonds or notes of the city authorized by this vote, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may require. Vote was favorable postponed from the City Council meeting on May 23, 2022. Question is on passing to a third reading.
Councilors, the question is on passage to a third reading. Counselor Azak?
Is this a roll-call vote or just a hand vote?
It's a hand vote.
Just a pass to a third reading.
I'd like to move for a reverse hand vote.
Left hands only.
Why not?
All in favor of passing to a third reading by a reverse hand vote?
I'll use my left.
All opposed? The motion passes.
Item six, order that the city of Brockton appropriates the amount of $34,800,000 to pay costs of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing an advanced water reclamation facility necessary for the efficient disposal of biosolids, which project will include but not be limited to demolition of the existing incinerator, installation of new sludge thermal dryers, sludge conveyance equipment, and all other ancillary systems, and any other related repairs and upgrades to the AWRF, and including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the city treasurer, with the approval of the mayor, is authorized to borrow set amount under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7-1, Section 8-14, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the city therefore. Further ordered that the city treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44A, any and all bonds or notes of the city authorized by this vote, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts may require. Postponed from the City Council meeting, May 23, 2022. Questions on passing to a third reading.
Counselor Nacastro?
Mr. President, at this time
Mr. President, at this time, I move to table this order.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been properly made and seconded to table this matter. All in favor of tabling? All opposed? The matter is tabled.
Thank you.
That is the end of our agenda. We do have a little bit of council's recognition, so I will take this time to thank the Finance Department, the Auditor's Office, the Clerk's Office, our legal counsel, and all of you for, you know, participating in this budget and putting together the budget, combing through it as diligently as you all did. I really appreciate your efforts and bearing with us. And so as to get out of here before 11 for once this week-